Any suggestions, comments? If I have a motion to approve in that.
Motion.
Motion for anyone setting. Any other second?
She said, he said.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
All in favor, say.
All right.
All right.
Yes.
So before we go on to the next agenda item, I'd like to make a, I'd like to suspend the rules to allow comment, to allow counsel to make some comments. I'd like a motion for that. I'm making a motion for that, please. Motion.
Say.
Say. All in favor? Olivia, you have a question?
Thank you. I just wanted to provide a little bit of information. As many are aware, we've been looking at the injection well. There's going to be some public comment following, and I wanted to give some information that we've been researching. So for one, I want to stress that the matter at hand, it really doesn't involve the town of Dover. We have homeowners and we have contractors. So this is a civil matter between those two parties. However, we have looked at the injection well, and we don't have all of our facts yet, so I would like to reserve that for another meeting. But we are researching information on the injection well, and the concern is that it may have been misconstrued. And so the town of Dover has the right to not issue a building permit due to inadequate drainage. Now, we brought out a civil engineer who is a consultant that we actually went on to the property, and he felt that the ground is just not suitable without this drainage issue being resolved. I want to emphasize that the town of Dover does not have a statute or your common law way of correcting that water. That's not the property of the town of Dover. So it's not the responsibility of the town of Dover to remedy it because it's not public property. So therefore, town of Dover cannot spend funds on that project. But the problem that we're dealing with, and we are looking at these facts, is that there are drainage laws in Tennessee. Not only have we dealt with this with this property, but other properties that come up, that the drainage law in Tennessee is governed by the natural flow rule. And under that rule, water has a natural easement along its natural paths, and the upper and lower landowners must accept water that naturally flows or that would have naturally flowed. Another point I wanted to make is that drainage law and the responsibility of the design engineer, that approval or acceptance of a drainage design by the local government does not relieve the design engineer of either professional liability or ethical responsibility. So designs are only reviewed for compliance with required design standards and codes, with the reviewer taking no responsibility for the outcome of the project as designed. So as I mentioned, we are looking at more information on the injection well, which Jeff has requested, and we do not have for tonight's meeting. But I wanted to present some of the facts that we have gleaned at this point for you all to be aware of. That concludes my comments on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you have any questions? Olivia, before we proceed into the meeting?
So at this point, do we need to make a motion to temporarily put a halt on the permit until we have all the facts?
That is the concern, that we don't have all the facts. So issuing a permit, right now, we know that the water is not draining properly. We know that there's an injection well that has been installed. We have physically looked at it. We estimate it's about 15 feet deep, and we want to get all the facts from the plans and designs to see how deep it should be. So it would be.
Although it's supposed to be inspected by the state of Tennessee.
Well, they, he has a, contractor has a permit. He has an authorization for the injection well. Jeff, you could probably better comment on what we don't have.
Well, he does have a permit, but we have no drawings of the injection well. I reached out to the engineer on the 4th, or 24th of June, I think is the date, and he told me he would give you that information in a couple of days, and I've not received nothing on it. I did not reach out back to him. You know, I've reached out, I've got his emails and what went back and forth. He's aware of the issue, but he has not contacted me back.
Was the injection well installed before the permit was issued?
That I do not know. I know the groundwork and stuff was done back, I think it, I think it was done like in 2022, maybe, 2023, sometime frame in there. But as of the actual injection well, I cannot answer that.
So then, Ms. Wong, back to my question, then we need to make a motion to stop any future permits or allowing permits until we have all the facts for the injection well? Since the last two meetings ago, we have everything meets certain criteria, then we'll have to come back to us, but we need to stop that.
My concern is if you issue the building permit, we still have a water problem.
Right, right.
That has not been addressed right now. There is going to be another building constructed that's going to add more drainage water. And so it's not that the town of Dover is trying to prevent any of these projects. We just need the information to understand if this is in compliance. And once again, this is a civil matter between homeowner and contractor, does not involve the town of Dover. However, and I've confirmed this with the MTS legal consultant, MTS civil engineer, that the town of Dover has the discretion to not issue a building permit until we have this information about this injection well.
First question.
Is this open for public comment or any kind of point this?
Not yet.
Not yet. So I think we need a motion for that. One of the comments, let them talk first.
No, we need a motion. We're talking.
Oh, motion to restate the rules.
No, we need a motion to suspend the permit until they have all the facts.
Okay. All right. Let's, yeah, okay, very good. So do we have a motion?
To, I say.
To. Ma'am?
I don't know that you need a motion to withhold it. We don't have the information.
I think we do, because we moved forward two meetings ago.
But wasn't it conditionally approved?
It was conditionally approved.
And was that information provided?
No.
Okay. It's still in that status?
Then that the conditions.
That is correct.
All right, so we can actually leave it. Okay, very good.
So, no permit until all the conditions are met and the injection well? Now, on that conditionally permit, they were, and tell me if I'm wrong on this, they did not have to come back to the planning commission board if they met all their criteria. I want them to come back to the planning commission board. I want them to see everything's in order, everything is satisfied before it gets shut down there. Can we do that?
So that's a different thing. So when it was conditionally approved, it said, hey, this is approved once these, I think it was two or three conditions are met.
Yeah.
Done with contract. So once those things are satisfactorily addressed, you know, it's like a checklist, check, 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 then the approval is, it is essentially approved, and that would not be coming back and put with the planning commission.
Was it to come to Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So is these other things added to that list?
I don't know if the injection well, most people, they just had it on there.
It's related to, I would call it pond, condo, condo plan, and I think there was a question about, I was trying to recall memory, I think it was placement of the.
Yeah. So do we need to make an amendment to those conditions? To add all this to that list?
If I'm understanding, and I didn't have the conversation with MTS, so I'll be very careful, but if I'm understanding from MTS, if I'm hearing correctly, it sounds like MTS says, based on these issues in their view, the city can hold off on providing the building permits. And I guess my question, maybe this would be a good thing for us to clarify in the interim is, I think that's as simple as, well, I need to be careful, but I think it may just be, you know, if they come to request the permit, then they explain the reason why, why not? And then that, there, if they want to dispute that, then their next step, then who need to check is either to go to EPA or the chance record. I'm just not sure what's, so.
I brought your point of work for question.
Ma'am?
No.
No, he's the chair, or I can put in order for a question.
No, ma'am.
I have the plans right here.
Ma'am, no, ma'am.
Okay, I have the plans here.
Thank you.
But that'd be one thing I just want to clarify. So I'm not entirely sure on the motion. I don't know that, I'm sorry.
So I understand you want to make a motion to amend this checklist item of the conditional approval.
Well, I think that'd be, it's been.
To the injection well.
I think we're letting up a couple things. It's been conditionally approved, and they have the conditions to, that they need to meet. So right now, those are the conditions they have to meet. So to go on and on, so I think the MTS permit question is actually separate from that, because it's a whole separate process where they've provided plans that say, hey, based on this injection well, it can take on the water. And if I'm understanding correctly, from MTS, they're saying clearly that the injection well does not appear to be functioning as correct. So then the request has been, we want to see the plans, we want to see the plans for the injection well, we want to see the as-built, so that we can verify whether or not it's acting correctly. And I'm trying to be careful here, but I believe, if I understand from MTS, MTS said in that instance, it would be just applicable for the town of, for Dover to say, tonight issue permits based on that information we know. Is that fair?
It's the discretion of the town of Dover not to issue a permit.
So it's a separate from the, from the conditions that were previously, so even, let's say they bring in items tomorrow to Jeff, and, you know, we look at them, and oh, yeah, this is what was needed, this is what was needed, this is what we needed. The plan would be formally approved, but at the same time, under the MTS guidance, Dover is still in a position to say, we're not going to issue a building permit because this injection will issue.
That's correct.
Am I saying this? No.
No.
So do we need a motion for this? Or do we need to amend it?
I think we need a motion to allow time to complete the audit of documents and gathering of data about this injection well. We want to look at the design a little further to make sure that it's functioning properly and whether or not it was misconstrued. The town of Dover has the discretion to withhold a building permit based on this information that we're trying to gather. But once again, any of the disputes between contractor and homeowners is between those parties. It does not involve the town of Dover. So they, we need to seek their own counsel. That is not our property. And so we are trying to gather information the best we can. If we're going to issue a building permit, we need to know that that injection well is working and in compliance with the EPA.
So do we need a motion now just to delay the?
Correct.
So I think that's what we, a motion to delay approving a building permit until conditions of the MTS.
Call the information.
Right. So we try to say that nice and neat, so forth. Give me a moment. So I'd like to make a motion to delay the building permit until MTS permit question is resolved.
Relevant to the injection well.
Relevant to the injection well, thank you. I guess it's. Thank you, Olivia. The other? Do we get that? Okay.
Can you make a motion?
I made a motion.
Or, or is the planning commission still suspended?
No.
Oh, okay.
I get that question. So can I say, now, a second.
Second.
Second, second. All in favor?
All right.
Carrie, you can add this. Put that down for me. Next on the agenda, we have Ms. Judith Field, three minutes.
Yes.
Stand, state your name, and you'll get three minutes.
Okay. Judith Field, 118 Colson Road, AKA by the good neighbors of mine, that I live at Colson Lake. And I have a beautiful fence around there, but my friends in Texas and Arizona say, what in the hell do you have a fence around Lake for? And I said, well, I did not know that before I built the house, but, you know, bought the house, but nonetheless, you know, I had that beautiful lake in my house. I would like to see this for me. I'm, it's become very tiresome to me, trying to sell a home for 11 months now, 11 months. And realtors don't like to show the house. They say it's a beautiful house, but where you live, it really sucks. And I say, yeah, I know. Um, anyway, so 11 months is a very long time to try and sell a home between two different realtors, and it just is not going to sell. Now, my problem is that I did not, I did ask before I bought the house, do I need flood insurance? Because preceding that, I looked at a house on a lake that got sold. So when I looked at this house in West Texas from the home that I had there, I asked, do I need flood insurance? And the answer was no. I do have flood insurance right now, because plain and simple, honestly, I've got it covering my ass. So, because I know that it flooded underneath preceding me buying it, and it will probably flood again. So I have to do this just to cover me, but it's a house, and I've had some nice homes. This is a house that I cannot sell because people don't want to buy it. And I've had people come from out of state to look at the house, and they unfortunately would come and see it when all the water was there. So it was like, we're not buying that. And I don't blame them. So the injection well, no injection well, I know what one is. And if that's what's going to take to remedy this in my home, because none of y'all would want to buy my house, I know that, I mean, I wouldn't buy it right now because I'm living there. And I'd like to see it remedied. Thank you.
Next agenda item, Ellen McCracken.
Yes, Ellen McCracken, I live on what is officially known as Colson Lake. By the locals, this is the information that was.
Ma'am, what's your address?
120 Colson Road, you know, out there on Lake Colson. And you've interrupted my time, I want my time back. Mayor Lisa Fitzi and dozens of others have told me this information about Colson Lake. The onus is on you, each and every one of you. On the city, from your actions, were egregious and absolutely malfeasance of office with maladministration to the citizens of the city and people who move here. Your pericization and your Machiavellian actors.
Hold on.
You're, no, you may not get out under Sullivan versus, under Sullivan versus the New York Times. I can say any words I want, yes, I can, and you are violating my First Amendment rights. Yes, you are. Yes, you are. Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
We're not going to use too many for.
No. She used, she used cuss words, and I don't continue. By position, your positions of power and authority, the Blakes have doorbells that catch on fire, that don't ring, that ding and dong dong, driveways that are falling apart. I spent this past winter, this past winter with no heat, no heat in my home, in a home that wasn't even a year old. When, no heat. He was supposed to fix the pump, the heat pump, it was hanging by the ventilation, and he was supposed to fix it before we moved in. That was the first thing he was trying to do. I am not through, and you do not have the legal right to interrupt my time. You do not have the legal right to interrupt my time. The Blakes took 400, $243.15 of HOA funds. $243.
This involves.
No.
It doesn't involve.
Yes, it does. They have the code, they should have had it inspected because there's a tank at the bottom.
This is a civil matter.
An 18-inch pipe curves off, and when you say you don't have the plans, Mr. Brigham gave my husband the plans.
That is not the whole plans, ma'am. That is just one piece of paper.
Yes, that's one piece of paper. And you know what? I have the whole piece of paper because I got it from the state.
Any discussions against the contractors, a civil matter between?
No, this is not. This is not, but the city did not enforce the code.
So, I mean, you are welcome to speak on the injection well, any matters, firearms, all of these other items.
Oh, but you, you said be the agenda item, says I could talk on those matters.
On the injection well, securely listed.
Oh, so that was in the city one?
Both of the agendas. You have those.
Talk on both, because I have it right here.
Injection well.
It says HOA injection well, hey, concerns. Okay, does it concern flooding or are we enforcing code?
But once again, this is not public property.
This is not the appropriate forum to respond to these types of.
Of course not, because Lisa Fitzi told me that I live on Lake Colson.
That was the, they ever built the condoms as well.
He built the injection well allegedly back in 2022, but they never made applications until 2024.
You're down?
No. Yeah, here, very good. Because they're liars, a bunch of pericities.
Before they said that, before they took that before.
They sat there and say, say that garbage.
We have another person who would like to speak.
Reference injection well and the drainage.
Yes.
Please stand. Any more adjustments?
My name is Tom McCracken, I live at 120 Colson Road in the town of Dover. I'm here to discuss the issues with the flooding in this area. It's my understanding, the engineer for Blak Homes LLC, Cal Berchett submitted a plan to the city prior to construction of my home, and three others.
Sir? I'm not trying to disrespect you, but I can't hear you. I want you, so I'm going to go to that door, and while I give you full night time.
Yes, we cannot hear you. We'll start your time again.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Because we can't hear. Jeff, start his time.
Sorry, sorry.
Yes, start his time.
My name is Tom McCracken, I live at 120 Colson Road in the town of Dover. I'm here to discuss the issues with the flooding in this area. It's my understanding, the engineer for Blak Homes LLC, Cal Berchett submitted a plan to the city prior to construction of my home, and three others, which included the construction of injection well with catchment basin as part of the drainage management for the homes built along Colson Road. The city was of the belief that the injection well had been constructed for Cal Berchett's plan, but recently, when Mrs. Wong, Mr. Jeff Brigham, my wife, Mr. John Page, myself, and the engineer that the city brought in from the university looked at the site, we discovered what the engineer for the city said was something that was constructed just for looks. The Blak Homes engineer plans, and that's a quote from him, "The Blak Homes engineer's plan called for a hole 61 and a half feet diameter, according to the drawing that was provided to me by Mr. Brigham, who obtained it from Cal Berchett itself," correct?
Correct. And now, I just want to speak on this. This was in the very beginning.
Am I going to stop?
Yeah, on my head. This, the plan he's talking about, and that Ms. McCracken was talking about, was something that I called way before MTS, and that's all he sent me, was just this one little drawing, and it was done, I forget what the date was, I'm very.
When he applied for the, I think it was probably at the time he applied for the permit to do the injection well. The disposal is there, but I suspect is not, because we did look at it, and that's why the engineer came there on behalf of the city, said it was just for looks.
And the plans that I requested from Mr. Berchett was how deep it is, how wide it is, you know, all of, all the drawings, and like I said, I've received nothing. But I won't, sorry for time.
But this, can I explain something about what you discussed before my time starts?
But this really shouldn't, at this point in order, it really shouldn't be discussing the two on the photo artist. We should allow him to stay for, he needs to stay for three minutes. So please proceed, sir.
Homes engineer's plan called for a hole 61 and a half feet in diameter, according to this. The depth was to be to bedrock, doesn't have a specific distance, but to bedrock. Lined with permeable material and filled with riprap with perforated corrugated metal pipe 18 inches in diameter that extends through the bedrock. I don't know the exact depth of bedrock at the site, but according to a geological survey available online for the Dover area, it appears to mean that bedrock would be over 100 feet below the ground surface. What we found at the site was perforated corrugated metal pipe in the ground, about 20 feet long, with a bend at the bottom, about 15 feet below the ground surface, with stagnant water standing to the bottom of it, riprap spread on the surface of the ground around the pipe. The university engineer's description of it as something built just for looks seems accurate. My neighbor, Ms. Fields, has spoken to the Blak Homes LLC engineer, Cal Berchett, who told her that the reason her home was flooded is because no injection well has been constructed on this site, and that what is there is simply a something. Is that in order?
Good morning.
Based on what was observed at the site, Cal Berchett is correct, there's no injection well. Blak Homes wants to continue construction on injection lots, which would increase the drainage water in the same catchment basin that serves our four homes. The drainage is already insufficient to prevent flooding, the homes are already constructed and occupied by residents of Dover. The builder, Blak Homes, has not constructed the drains according with her engineer's plans, unlike no city has any plans to remediate this or, or at least prevent the construction of something that's going to dump even more water into the catchment basin that then is going to flood mine besides just under her house and mine and others. So that's why I'm here. It isn't built. And according to the engineer that came and looked at it, it's just something for looks. And if you want the drawing, I can give you a copy of this.
Correct. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Here or not, we'll move on. Next new item, new business site plan for the Amazon proposal, did y'all get any?
All right, this, this come up pretty quick, and I'll give a, just a little background about it. Amazon is wanting, y'all got the pictures on the, on the thing? It's going to be similar to these pictures that y'all have on the front. Can you see that? What they're, what they're looking to do in this, in all rural counties. So they're putting these bins in, they're coming in with box trucks by, by Ms. Jessica, this is what she said they'd be doing. The shipping containers will be remained on-site, they will not be replaced on a regular basis. Instead, we anticipate one box truck per day making package deliveries to the site locations. Packages will be unloaded from the box truck, placed inside the shipping container until they are picked up for deliveries. We do not anticipate a line haul trucks visiting this location. To facilitate customer deliveries, we will be around 20 trips a day per driver visiting the location to pick up routes of packages. These drivers will be utilizing their personal vehicles to pick up packages and deliver to local customers. Their hours of operation is going to be between 9:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., and they are looking to lease this lot for 24 months. She didn't put this in email, but I asked her on the phone about job lives. She said they're looking to hire about six to 10 people, depending on how, how the flow is, and this is going to take a lot of packages away from our local.
Post office.
Post office, from them to have to deliver. On the site plan, of course, there is water already, oh, let me get this out there. Their only thing that they need is bathrooms. So Mr. Saunders, who owns this piece of property through the, I forget what the name of it is, the GIC or whatever LLC, but he is going to.
Capital investment group.
Capital investment group, yeah. He is going to build him an office there on this lot and put the bathrooms on the lot for them. Now, this won't be built before they want to come in, so they're in the, they're in the process with Mr. Obie Garland about letting them use their bathrooms until this, until the office building gets built, so. And that's about all I know.
So will there be office staff there?
There will be, the way Ms. Jessica said, she said all of it's something, they're just, like I said, they're, they're just starting all this out, but there will be one person there, probably about, she said about five hours a day, and all their job is going to be, is go in and getting all the packages, you know, lined up to how the delivery routes go. But she said that we'll be, that we'll be hiring at least six local people to do the deliveries, but they'll be using their own personal vehicles, and I don't know how that works through Amazon on that part, so.
So the bathroom is going to be constructed on capital investment group, and the trailer, the box trailer will be on a different piece of property?
No, it's all on the same piece of property. It's all on the same piece of property.
How often will they be coming to bring all of this to put? How often will they be coming to bring all of this to put in these storages?
She said it, and she told me two weeks ago, it would be every day and every night. But the email that she sent me this morning, and that's the reason why I didn't get that to you, but I'm sorry. But she sent me an email this morning and she said that it'll only, right starting now, it's just going to be one delivery every morning of bringing the packages. And she said it all depends, you know, of course, you know, I know my wife, I got, I got two Amazon packages on my front porch right now. But this could go into something bigger down the road depending on how well it is.
I have another question. Of course, I think it sounds great. Just want to make sure. I know that at one time that we had the grocery, we had Uncle Joe's, but all of that lot was clear. Now we have all of those, um, motorhomes and things sitting there. How is that going to be as far as viewing? Because the traffic is a whole lot more than it was whenever, you know, we had Uncle Joe's in the grocery store. You know, we had a lot of trucks and things coming out then. But what about the viewing of, of them being able to get out? Because, you know, with it being right there, that's kind of congested. So.
Well, that's something I guess we can look at, you know, going further.
Safety issue, them coming in and out of there.
Right. So that's something we can look at going further. Like she said, at the most, one truck a day, maybe possibly two, and, you know, one coming at night. But then there's six local drivers will be the ones coming.
You've got them coming. And like I said, that was all once a really, that lot was all clear at one time. And now it's not. So with them coming in and out of it being congested there.
Where is the lot?
Uh, you remember where our old Macintosh building was? It's, if you're looking at the Macintosh building, it's on the right side of it.
Close to where that old pond is, right? Close to the pond. Yes.
So they use the road that goes back to that property that belongs to this owner?
No, it's a, that's totally different driveway. It, it, it buds up to that, to that lot, but it's a totally different driveway to that property.
Let me know right where Macintosh was.
No, it's the, there's actually a lot beside Macintosh and where Saunders.
Those storage buildings were.
Yeah, it used to be storage building, right?
Some.
Sheds.
Those little bath buildings. They sell little storage cabins. Yes, yes.
Uh, there's already, there's a sewer line on the backside of it for the bathrooms and it's already has its own water meter in the front. So.
I think it sounds good. I just think we need to check and make sure with the safety of them coming in and out of there. With being a new, I don't know, that may not even be something that, that you think, but, you know, it, um, that's just something that I would, I would like to see done. That makes sure that, you know, that it's, with it being so congested now with all of those buildings sitting there and coming in and out there, that would be, that would be my concern.
Are the trailers on that actual parcel or were the one next to it?
The next to it.
It's on like, on the same parcel as the bathroom. Yeah, it's on the same parcel.
Yeah.
So it could be a different order than the RVs that were.
Yes.
Right. The RVs is a, is a different, different line.
So are they bringing the, this in or they building something?
No, it's just going to be a, it's that picture I showed you out there. It's just, she said this ain't exactly the picture. It may be one bigger than this, but it's, but it's all going to be anchored. They're going to put concrete. Concrete pads down and they're going to anchor it, you know, anchor this down for, you know, for safety reasons, for tornadoes and storms and stuff like that.
So it looks like storage units.
Kind of does, yeah.
But it'll be Amazon, or they, or Amazon, and then the office won't be attached. It'll be separate.
It'll be separated.
What's the timing of the office?
Huh?
What's the timing of the office?
Uh, he's, it, according to him this morning, if this passes through, he's going to try to get the office done before Christmas. Because Amazon wants to be in before Christmas, I imagine. So.
I'm sure.
But I mean, you know, though, like I said, they're, they're, they're putting them up and we got, I mean, I consider it an honor for Street County actually to be chosen for one of the spots to be tried, for it to be tried. So.
But it'll be anchored down and it'll be like an ice sore or anything?
No, no, it won't be.
It's going to be done in, according to codes and things that we're, that we want to have done.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there going to be a fence around it?
Uh, no, but they will have their own security cameras on it and they'll have the lighting and all that.
Because we built, they built, put something like that in there and all these people that want to have a storage unit, storage units and they don't have, and we said.
Well, this is good. I don't, wouldn't consider this a storage unit because these packages ain't staying there. They'll come in that morning and they're gone at evening. You've got more packages coming in.
That's what it looks like.
Well, I mean, I know it's what it looks like, but they're not, you're not storing nothing in it, you know? But packages, we're going to pick it up.
Right. Just transporting it in and out, just supposed to put it, like a transport it out.
So you're requesting a motion?
You got anything, Ryan?
Yes, and I'm in with what we said too.
I'm concerned about that.
Sure. Uh, and just had a couple of comments. They provided a resubmission to clarify a lot of these things. Asked them to show contour lines and there's not enough drop, five foot drop on the site apparently. You know, clarifying, they clarified both the sites paved, about the water sewer question. We did ask about fire hydrants and I believe there are two on the next block. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. We asked, uh, asked for a turnaround diagram and then obviously with the site being all asphalt, that, that pretty well resolved. Clarifications on, on the information on the ownership and then also that we had the correct parcel. Okay, so a couple of things that, well, we did say, uh, you know, it's all asphalt, but we probably, but if we, we do need to have this great party response. So they, they've added an actual party where they show on their six total spots. No signs are proposed for the site. I did ask about lighting. There's actual lighting that you can see on the diagrams, but they said no lighting beyond that. And then is there a pass to propose Amazon distribution center or restaurant? They said no, but possible concrete plings to tie down. And then talked about water sewer availability and then they had sent back to the site plan just for reference. So I think there are a couple of things that, a couple of questions I think that should at least be raised. One is, uh, the subject property is on C two and it joins a residential zone property on the south side. So buffer strip will be required. So on the south side of the strip, there's an existing residence and, uh, CIG has a name, I believe.
Yeah.
They own both properties. So what they're proposing is to put the buffer on the, on the residential side.
Right.
So that would actually put the buffer in. Uh, so just wanted to raise that as their proposed solution. And I think Jeff's answered a lot of these questions. Some additional considerations. So how often will the facility be replaced? It sounds like this, the facility that we see the picture on is going to be essentially.
Well, the way she, why she talked this morning, she called her this morning because everybody was out for the holidays. And so she had to get more clarification on it because she said that, that this facility would be there for two years.
Okay.
Possible going further after the two years, but they are signing the two-year lease and it goes through.
Does that seem to be there? Sound like they're going to drop one off, pick one up, drop, no?
No, that's going to be stationed. Right.
In the basement. Right.
And then when the truck comes in to drop off, is it going to load below? And I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
She said it won't. She said it, now, she said I can't rule out semi trucks, but now you know, it's going to be box trucks. But there is, there is room, because we went down there measuring, there is room if a semi truck does pull in to the target plate they ran and pull out.
And would it ever, and I don't think there's served, there's any parking area for the truck right now.
So there won't be no trucks on those sites.
Okay. It's just they'll drop off and leave. So it's like a loading, essentially.
Right.
Apologize, Jeff, to, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. Just running through the questions. And then how many daily trips are projected for trucks to the site? Sounds like one in the morning for now, possibly going into two with the morning and evening. And then how many daily trips are projected for employees and our contractors? And that was answered, I think twenty or thirty?
Twenty, yes.
That'd be seven days a week? Because Amazon delivers seven days a week.
Let me see if she put that in her email.
See if that's seven days a week.
All right. She just says hours of operation vary, but more likely to be nine, eight, or seven, but she could put a.
Because, you know, they deliver on Sundays. So I'm thinking that's, that's something that it would be a seven day a week. Just.
Are they going to put one to start with or is it going to be two of them?
Uh, it's just one, rightly.
I have a discrepancy between the, where they're going to put it, how they're going to put it. You know, in this drawing, it says.
Uh, this, this is the updated drawing. Yes. I just got, I just got that this morning, too.
Well, now this is a question too. No, that's correct. That's, that's the quote off the face.
Right.
And then the actual, uh, trailer sits right there.
Correct.
And then is there projected initial time for use facility and stuff like this up to two years initially? So the, the big question here, sorry to say the big one for the last, but, um, I'll just read the comment. Retail trade is permitted in the C two highway service district, but warehouse and storage uses are prohibited except those which are located within an incidental permitted uses. So the use question here and part of the reason, why I bring this question out, it's, it's not, I don't think it's a hundred percent clear one way or the other. It's a little bit of a gray area. So the question is interpretation. Use question is whether the proposed Amazon distribution center would be considered a warehouse facility or as a distribution store, is it considered separate as a distribution center and is therefore incident onto the retail trade? So that's one of the questions popping up. So if it's viewed as, as a warehouse, then it would need to be tied with something incidental to the uses on the property. So, you know, the cleanest example would be, um, Taco John. If they want to have a warehouse on their, on their site to store tacos or something, then that's clearly fine in the C two. But I think part of the intent at C two is not to just have a warehouse. So the question is, this is part of the, it's part of e-commerce, which is a little different that I think was originally contemplated when some of us are going through. Is it, I think one of the questions is, would this be considered a warehouse or at this point would the planning commission consider this something different, like a distribution center that essentially supports a retail trade and would therefore be permissible? So I think that's one of the open questions to, to talk through.
I think it's a distribution center.
Yeah.
But there's no office. And should they be able to go in without an office?
It's going to be an office.
It's going to be, but there's not now.
They're building, they're waiting on their approval to get it built.
But they're going to hit, go ahead and move this in and get it started before the, the office is finished.
Yes, she, she likes, she would like to be, if it all gets passed, she would like to be up by September.
Is there a timeline when the, the office will be completed?
I, I talked to Bruce just briefly this morning and he's wanting, he's wanting to have that done by December two, but he don't make no promises of him getting that. That's why he said that they worked out with, uh, Obie Garland about using the restrooms there. Because that was, you know, that's their biggest thing is, is having.
How are they going to have people in an office if they don't have an office? They're going to stay in OB. Is that?
No, no. The, the person that works there will be working in the, in the warehouse itself. Or I won't say warehouse. Already because the Amazon facility, yes.
Yeah.
All they'll be doing is, is like getting the packages. Once they get all their packages lined up, now this is according to the way, if I got it understanding from her, once they do what they had to do on their packages and getting them ready for, for their routes or whatever, then they'll leave. There'd be no reason for them to stay there.
And also to clarify, once the office is in, this facility will still be there?
Correct.
They'll, they'll be the two together.
Yeah. So where is he building the office and does he have a permit for that?
That's why we're here. He, he's not built the office yet. It's on the plan up there.
He's one that permits to build the, to build the office. And I saw it in the video.
Office.
Yeah. So it's going to the side of the residential rental, rental houses, right?
Take her.
Is that right? You said.
Uh, yeah, it's on the driveway. Their houses are set back pretty, pretty good right there. So.
Is that, um, who's that owner said that's?
Versa Saunders.
Versa Saunders owns all those too?
Yes.
Those, those houses as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further questions, John? No. Do we have a motion to grant this? A grant of permit for this action?
Can I say something real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
Is he going to bring the office plans? Will he be able to bring those to us?
They're around here on.
I know, but will he be able, you know, will he be here as it's being built? Or is he just going to, you're going to approve it and then him, him build it?
Yeah, you're approving.
We approve it tonight.
Yeah, you're approving. He's pointing at you.
Okay. I just, I want to make sure it's clear on that. Okay. I'm sorry. Excuse me.
One other question that I might raise too. So they're planning on building the office strip on other property. Might be worth considering that as a possible, uh, condition on approval, just so that that's.
It's property.
That's his property.
That's his property. Yes, yes, that's what I'm.
So at least that buffer is built.
Yes.
Is there signage for this?
No, there's no signage requested at all.
I can see it's illuminated. Nothing's very bright when you drive past.
And people will not be able to go to the site and pick up their packages. That's something else.
That's strictly going to be carried here.
Yes.
I can't believe it's not going to be fenced.
Ma'am?
I can't believe it's not going to be fenced.
There's motion on that.
Yeah. All right, sorry. So we have a motion. Is there any further questions? Just to make sure. Eric, Eric, do you want to think on this?
No, I'm just concerned about it looking like a storage unit. And we don't let storage units come in unless they're fenced.
You got a motion? Need to second it.
Yeah, should we have a motion? Did you second it?
Oh.
Yeah, we did second it.
Okay.
All in, Dave?
All opposed?
All opposed?
All opposed.
One first.
Jeff, I have one thing before we move on to the next, another. If it goes on from two years, will this be brought to us again?
Yes, that's what I told Ms. Jessica.
So we've got a two-year trial that it'll be brought to us again.
Right. And it's kind of a trial both ways because they're wanting to make sure it works and we're wanting to make sure it works too.
We see that it doesn't work without putting a fence around it. In two years, we can come back and say, we need a fence around it.
And I think if they, I mean, me personally, if they had problems, I would see them putting a fence up.
If it's not real life, it'd be better to put a fence around it. But they, yes, definitely. Okay.
All right, next, this is, uh, all business tiny homes.
Okay. Well, we're just, I think tonight we're just going to vote because it's, we're running late here. To vote on whether, I guess to see if y'all want to bring the tiny homes in. Or I guess more discussion on tiny homes.
And we're talking about them only on those lots.
The non-performing lots.
There's not anything else feasible. Nothing else. That's not it, that's it. And they will have to go along with codes, just like builder codes, contractors, everything. They'll have to meet all the criteria.
I'm not sure of the question, actually.
Do you want that? A little clarification, maybe a little, maybe one of the two.
Yes.
One is, one of the things that the planning commission may want to consider is, um, where there are, are requirements. So making sure that, that these aren't, uh, now, it's not planned to be mobile homes that stay on the chassis. But what some jurisdictions have done is, has been actually putting requirements on. If you're going to actually place it, here are some of the things that would be required. So for instance, removing the wheels, removing the tow hitch or, uh, then, some of the questions that I think that have been raised, uh, had it, had connected up the water sewer, had its own, uh, electrical permit. So those might be just some, some things to consider. And as far as using these lots of record, right now, there, there is a, a procedure in place and this owner is to use those. So, um, as opposed to, uh, so, so what approach could be to, to try and work through, this owner is covering just those lots. Another approach just worth considering is to use the existing process. So in this case, uh, whenever the developer is ready to, to come in on one, two, maybe even all five lots, the developer then would, uh, bring a site plan before the board's order appeals. Board's order appeals will review whether they can discuss, hey, you know, maybe push this a little further back in the lot or just a little bit left. So there could be some look for the concerns of the neighbors. It would add some headache on the developer certainly. It would add some headache on the developer certainly, because of having to come before the board of zoning appeals and that can impact scheduling, so, but then, you know, they're able to do, say, lots one, two, and five or something of that nature, then that enables the board of zoning appeals as a body to be able to say, hey, let's make a little adjustment here, be close to the lot line, can we shift, so, and then that way, there would not be any need to modify the zoning ordinance created to do zone for these five lots, so, just wanted to put those two thoughts out there.
They will be stationary, just like a home, right? It won't be like a mobile home, like they rent mobile home lots and then move them in and rent the lot, these are.
Basically, I, I'm solid foundation.
If those are the regulations you wanna put in?
Right.
I don't know if those exist in the current.
No, they don't exist, that's the reason why we, you know. But if we, if we do it like you said, everyone, I mean, we could, I guess we could leave it like it is and then everyone that come forward, that brought, will have to come through the board of zoning appeals and get an approval to put it in, correct?
Uh, sort of, uh, two issues, I think, one is if you wanna make sure that they're, you know, if you're gonna put time on a lot, here's what you need to do, and, and similar precedent, and these are different than mobile homes, but with mobile homes, a lot of jurisdictions will have things like, hey, require scrubbing and connecting to water sewers, so there, there's, you know, pretty common practice, so I think it'd be sort of two things, one, if you're gonna put a mobile, uh, if you're gonna put a tiny house.
I've got two cookies, I'm sorry.
No, that's me, that's me, Jeff. Um, I, I think no outside assistance to confuse myself, but I appreciate that. So, it would be, um, I think adding some guidelines, whether it be in the zoning ordinance or, or maybe the town ordinance, that would clarify the conditions on a tiny home on a lot. And then I think the second question is then, uh, if it is using the existing approach on lots of record, then, you know, just making sure that developers know they need to come before the board of zoning appeals to get approval on that lot. So I think there's sort of two questions, one, uh, you wanna put some, uh, clarification of what's needed to be able to put a tiny house on a lot, and then two, if it is really focused on these lots of record, do we wanna adjust the zoning ordinance for just those couple of lots or do we, do we, does the planning commission wanna adjust the zoning ordinance for those particular lots or does the planning commission want to go with the existing process as it is? A little bit more cumbersome for the developer, but then does give the board of zoning appeals a little more, which is you all as well, this, would, would give you all a little more, uh, control over the process.
I just think as long as they're, they're put on a permanent foundation, you know, and meet the codes of whatever.
Right, but I think that's what he was saying, if they brought one to us or to me, then before I could even let them do that, I have to bring it, we leave it and look like it is, correct me if I'm wrong. Bring it before the board of zoning appeals and then they have the, the same, correct?
Could you put that as a requirement?
Yes.
Okay.
So my concern is legally, you, we don't allow mobile homes in cities. To me, they're very similar. Do we have a legal concern that if we allow this, then we should be able to allow mobile homes? I mean, you can put a mobile home on a permanent foundation. You can put a tiny house on a permanent foundation. I mean, I don't see there's a difference between tiny houses and a mobile home. They come in on wheels, you can take wheels off a boat, you can put a permanent foundation on a boat. They're, they're very similar. I think I read where the, uh, power utilities would, we don't know if it's gonna be connected, is it a tiny house or is it gonna be a boat? I mean, to me, these two, and I, and I've looked at them for quite some time, they're the same thing, except one is small and fancier and one is bigger and longer. And I just think we have a legal, um, problem to me that if we allow this, are we gonna be able to allow for a mobile home? I mean, our, our guideline says we have, we don't allow mobile homes. I mean, we're very similar.
And that is one of the things where it all gets tangled together a little bit.
It is a big problem.
Tiny homes and mobile homes.
But things are actually going on lots that can't, anything actually fit on. What was the size, he said they were all the same size, is, pretty much, they were. Because they, huh, what was it? Yeah, that means about 500 square feet maybe? So those are nothing, nobody can do anything with those lots.
You can put a mobile home.
I don't know, 400 square foot mobile home?
Actually, we have other cities that are examples.
Wow, yeah, we had, we had non-conforming lots, they're nothing to do with, it's just gonna sit there.
Cities, listen to these examples, Knoxville, et cetera, do they allow mobile homes as well as these or have they differentiated if they don't?
Yeah, okay.
We got those.
Well, that's part of the requirements for, uh, you know, has to be off the chassis, for instance, has to be connected, so that gets to the RV at least. But, uh, the, the mobile home question, and part of it is too, I think the IRC has a whole code just on tiny homes?
Yeah, that's, I had not, not looked through it all yet. But it looks like, just look at this one, and this is the one for, uh, for Mount Eagle, they got them, they got them under, the tiny homes under with the mobile homes.
So they're allowed.
I don't think you can say no to one and say yes to the other. They're too similar. Yeah, I think, we, I think if it did get approved and, and asked us why, I think we have a legal issue someone was pushed to put, to put a mobile home on the lot.
So, if this is helpful, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I just think the two issues, one is, as I mentioned, it's non-conforming lot, these are too small to build potentially a new home unless they built exactly what was there before, and two, the size of the tiny home meets a certain specification unlike a mobile home.
So, helpful going back, one question, here's how Rosberg County handles it, or, I'm sorry, here's how, here's how Rosberg County handles it. I'll, I'll catch up on problems. Uh, manufactured tiny home, a preassembled permanent residential dwelling measuring 400 square feet or less in floor area, floor area excluding lots. It is a modular home and is regulated under the Tennessee Modular Buildings Act and displays a decall verified by the state fire marshal's office. For regulatory purposes, the term is not to include readily, uh, not to include ready removable structures. And then they differentiate tiny house, and I believe the proposal here is for, would be the manufactured tiny home.
Correct.
In the nearest or tiny house definition, a site built, a site built dwelling that is 400 square feet or less in floor area excluding lots, it is regulated by the applicable appendix of the current adopted international residential code, for regulatory purposes, term is not to include ready removable structures. So I think it's the, the square foot is just one of the big limiters and, and I need to be careful, but I believe it's actually a different tagging, it's a different colored tag, a mobile home versus a modular home.
Now, what I've been told, I've not seen them, but supposedly even on some modular homes, they have a green tag on them, which is, the green tag is telling you, hey, this is up to the IBC code, this is up, you know, for what you do with your house. And then they got a red tag, which meaning that it's not up to code. So, and that's on tiny homes, on modular homes, on trailers, double eyes, everything.
So do we allow a modular home to be built in the city?
Not, I, I've never done one yet, but that question has come up, but I'm not, I mean, this is what it is. A modular home is real similar to your same guideline as a mobile home.
Went down the street for me.
And, and I believe Tennessee actually has a modular home act, which, uh, uh, so they're, they're trying to, exactly that same question you're asking, differentiate modular homes from, uh, mobile homes.
So if they wanted to build a small house on that lot, they could do that? They want the modular, they want the tiny house because it's faster?
And, and just to clarify too, if they wanted to build a small house there, they would have to go, as a house, it's a lot of pressure, they have to go through the BCA, get approval, yes, if they were. And if it's helpful, I could draft up, uh, if it's helpful, I could.
Some rules for it?
If it helpful, be helpful, just see it on paper.
I think it would be helpful.
We can look at how we can do it, think out of your account.
Yeah.
I think there needs to be more details about it.
More details, first, do it, you can see what friends.
Garland has two out there on, on 79 on the way to Paris, that are set up, permanent, and they, they look very nice. And then, then I think they also have some up in that, with their Airbnbs in the county.
I remember they've got those somewhere in Paris, it's on the routing inside.
Are these gonna be Airbnb? As far as I know, I don't, he is not, and, I don't, he doesn't, he doesn't even, Mr. O.B. Garland doesn't even own, own any of these lots, so.
Who knows if people even wanna build one on?
Right.
Did we have this discussion a few months back about the tiny home?
No, this was somebody wanna put in a tiny home park, like a trailer park.
And that was what we done?
Correct.
And for the draft, seems like the two big, the two big concerns, definition, so it's nice and clear, that's a tiny house that goes with a mobile home, and then the second part, will it look like that in permanently fixed?
Okay, so I'd just like some more information, how you divide them, how you differentiate them, I'm not really clear that that's gonna, I suspect there isn't a, gonna be a clear enough definition. Do we have a motion here?
So.
No.
I'm not even sure what's gonna be.
I think, I, I would like to be more, I'd like to have more information about it. I'm not saying no, because we definitely, we'd love to have those lots utilized, but we sure wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing.
So, if it's up for August, I'll just plan on bringing the draft?
That would be awesome, yes, perfect, thank you, yes, that would be great, yes. So is that what you're?
Yes.
My question, title it, you might, the motion, I might question to title it.
Yes, right.
Yes, I might.
Second. Second.
You don't wanna title, so you probably don't wanna title?
I'm voting no.
Okay.
Does that make you sure? I don't wanna leave you out. All right, thank you. I think that's it, I'm making the way up. Last agenda, oh boy.
I'm just, I might question, the journal?
Second.
Second.
All right. Here's John, you can write your analysis. I appreciate it.